Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Doug Melton is the pastor at Southern Hills Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let's pray together. Our heavenly Father, we begin this day by praising you as the Creator of all things. Lord, you're the giver of life. As the psalmist says, "This is the day the Lord has made." Let us rejoice and be glad in it. So, Father, we come before you saying, "Lord, thank you for giving us life. Thank you for giving us the good health to be here this day." And so, Lord, as we go about your business, we pray, Father, that you would give us wisdom, clarity of mind and thought. Lord, I pray that you would control our hearts and that, Lord, every word that comes out of our mouth would be glorifying of you. Lord, I pray that the peace of Christ would rule in our hearts. And, Lord, we thank you for this city. We pray your blessing on our city and all of its citizens. Father, I thank you for this council. I thank you, Lord, for the position that you have placed the men of authority. And, Lord, we thank you for our mayor. Father, we pray your blessing of grace and mercy on them. I pray, Lord, that the unity of Christ would be in this place. And we thank you, Lord, for our Savior Jesus Christ, who loves us and gave himself for us. And it's in his holy and precious name, the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, it is Allied Arts Month, and we had a kickoff event just last week at the Cowboy Hall of Fame. And John Parsons and Renzai is here with Deborah. You don't want to come up? We have a resolution. Let's the clerk to read it.
Whereas for four decades, the month of February has been recognized as Allied Arts Month by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City and hundreds of nonprofit organizations, local businesses, and the community at large. Whereas the arts enhance and enrich the lives of all Oklahoma City residents from all walks of life and backgrounds. Whereas arts education inspires Oklahoma City schoolchildren to pursue greatness, instills in them creativity and problem-solving skills, and often changes the course of their lives. Whereas the nonprofit arts industry impacts our state's economy with over $300 million supporting the full-time equivalent of more than 10,000 jobs and generating over $29 million in state and local government revenues. Whereas Allied Arts has served as the champion of Central Oklahoma's art community and infused more than $53 million to enhance our city's quality of life since 1971. Now, therefore, Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2015 as Allied Arts Month in Oklahoma City. And he urges citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our community and to especially encourage greater participation in the arts by all citizens.
Let's show our appreciation to Allied Arts. Renzai?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, thank you for allowing us to have Allied Arts Month this month. We support 26 agencies. Last year, we funded over 43 with grants. And the campaign is going to raise 3.4 million, at least. That's what John and I are -- our job is, and we are about a third, a little less than a third of the way there. So, thank you for having us and thank you for all you do for the arts in Oklahoma City.
And if a business owner out there would like a presentation by Allied Arts to get their employees more in line, what can they do?
The best thing to do would be to call Deborah or Jennifer Bryan. Jennifer, raise your hand. And any of us at Allied Arts would love to come out to businesses. We have over 100 workplaces committed where employees have the opportunity to give some as little as a dollar or $5 a month to support the arts. We have 7,000 donors. One of our goals for the next few years is to double the amount of donors, and we know we will do that through workplaces.
Well, thank you both for your work. We really appreciate it. And I couldn't find Deborah, but yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And I just think if I could add on to that, I think for folks that may not know what Allied Arts is, a lot of times we talk about it like the United Way for the arts community. And it provides an opportunity for folks to make a donation in one location that serves Renzai over 43 arts organizations this year. I think we have 23 official members?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six official members. You keep adding. It's growing and growing, but so exciting. And it ranges from, you know, the big agencies like the Philharmonic and the ballet to Science Museum Oklahoma, to the Oklahoma Rodeo Opry.
From opera to operette.
Opera to operette. You got it all covered. And down in Norman, the firehouse. You know, and so it's not just Oklahoma City. It's at the greater metro area and provides so much education opportunities for young people. Thank you all so much for what you do.
Thank you, Mick.
And just to remind Council, Allied Arts is part of the heart of the city, the city's employees charitable giving contribution drive that concluded last fall. And so, they're a big part of our --
One of our largest workplaces.
Appreciate you guys. Let's show our appreciation one more time to Allied Arts. Thank you. All right, as we call the meeting to order from the office of the mayor, we have appointments to a couple to the Oklahoma City Park Commission. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item three, B, C, and D are to go into executive session to review salary considerations for the manager, the municipal councillor, and the city auditor. There's some -- a typo on here or a --
Yeah, no, it says city manager on all three of them.
All three of them. And we probably should repost this. Why don't we just defer this for a week?
Mayor, let's strike them and we'll procure new [inaudible].
Okay. Motion to strike then would be in order. Okay. Cast your votes, and that order is struck from the agenda. It'll be back on next week. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the journal for January 13th, and four B is to approve the journal for January 6th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I just had one this morning on page nine. Page nine, item six T, it's a maps for kids item regarding technology, but the dollar amount is wrong in it. So, we asked if that be strictly, and then we'll bring that back next week. Again, that's item six T.
Okay. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Then let's reassess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items. Okay, is that a second?
Second.
All right. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Three items.
You have a question on item B. Last week, I asked a question about a gas contract, and I was told that it included purchase of natural gas as well as --
Yes, sir.
-- management services. This one says we're going to purchase natural gas from another company. Are we going to purchase gas in both those companies?
I believe this is the same company. The first one was authorized, authorization to negotiate, and this is the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ready to vote the PPA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations on any item listed in the consent docket?
You know, I have a few minor questions.
Okay.
Item C, Q, M1, M2, and G.
I think Pat stole two of mine, so I'll let you talk about them. I wanted to talk about G and --
Yes. Okay. Pat, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Your Honor. On item C, I just have a question. This is a resolution authorizing to purchase some trucks, and it doesn't say how many trucks and what they're going to be used for, and I think that would be helpful information for the council to have.
Amy Simpson's here.
I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
The question was, how many trucks are we going to buy and what departments are they going to be used for?
I know some of it was utilities, and that's the only department that I'm remembering offhand. And this is really just to hold us over until the state awards a new contract, so we may not be purchasing anything between now and March 31st, but we wanted to get something on the agenda in case something comes up during that time period. So, we don't have a set --
So, we don't know how many trucks we may purchase or what they're going to be used for?
Not -- well, I can get that for you. I don't have it.
Well, I think that kind of information would be helpful for the council to have before we approve a resolution buying so many trucks for so many people. And I think the fact that we have this resolution here is important. If we need to keep space, but I think we need to have some idea of an approximation how many trucks we intend to buy and how they're going to be used.
So, how many for each department?
Well, if that's the way it's broken down, don't go through a lot of effort to change your format, but the format should reflect the number of trucks we're purchasing and who's going to use them.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Pat, Jim, any other items?
Item G is a whole bunch of projects, and I wanted to compliment the Public Works Department on the fact that they've got the class and boulevard strip, new paving there striped, and looks pretty nice, and it does help the traffic flow a lot because before it was three lanes going up there and every man for himself, and it were not very much of deals. M1 and M2, essentially the same questions. We've taken a lot of money out of old bond issues, and we're going to use them someplace else. But I don't know exactly how much money we're going to have and how it's going to be spent. And I think that would be important information for the council to have.
This is cleaning up some old money. The one that had, was it just $5,000 out of it, Eric?
Yeah, so on the very first item on M1, you're going to find that it's about $106,000 of old '95 money that we're actually applying to the unit price contract, and that's a unit price drainage contract that just takes care of daily, weekly, and annual needs across the city. So, we're going to take those resources and use them for this next year on M1.
Why don't we use them on specific major projects? Wasn't that the reason we have a GEO bond project is to use not operating money, but just to be able to build capital projects?
So, the listed projects, yes, that is exactly what occurred. This is unlisted money and interest income. So, this wasn't designated specifically for a particular project, but we're still going to use it towards drainage needs across the city.
Operating money, I think.
No, these are actually bond funds.
I know, but we're going to use them as operating money.
No, on M1, this will actually be for construction in the city. So, if we have an inlet that fails, or if we have a blockage or something that occurs on the drainage, we'll send a contractor out to remove that blockage or assist city crews on drainage construction projects on M1.
Okay.
M2 is a little bit different. We're actually --
M2 is, yeah, M2 is a little different.
And I think just maybe to summarize that, there is a need for some lighting improvements in an area. I think a little bit of background, interstate highway system in Oklahoma City has a shared maintenance responsibility. The highway itself is maintained by Oklahoma Department of Transportation, but anything outside of the curb lines is maintained by the city. There's some light poles that are in the city maintenance area that require some research and some repair. There's some bolts that are starting to show some age, and so we're going to have a structural engineer with these funds investigate that, and we're going to make any necessary repairs to ensure that they're safe. Again, we're using unlisted funds for traffic and lighting improvements, and that's what this will go towards, 200,000.
So, I just had a quick question to follow on with that. These are '95 funds.
On these, this is 2007 on M2.
M1.
M1 is '95.
It was '95.
And we have very much of a focus to clean up. That's why we're doing this, is to get rid of it. And a lot of it is some interest monies that had accrued, that got put into account, and we're really trying to clean those up and get those old accounts taken care of. That's the focus of --
Is '95 as far back as we could go with any --
Yes. And as a matter of fact, what we're cleaning up now, I think we're --
We thought we were cleaned up last summer, but then we got some additional interest proceeds, and so we're trying to spend the interest faster than it can generate new interest.
I'm not arguing about having extra money to spend, believe me, particularly on drainage, but it's just --
We're very much focused on cleaning up those old accounts and moving forward.
Great, okay.
I think it's important that we clean up the old accounts, but I think it's equally important that we use the money intelligently, not just throw it around and have it impact. How to be, GEO bond money, whether it's defined projects or not, should be used for capital projects.
And it will be.
And for further assurance, if it's drainage money, it's used to drain it, if it's traffic, it's used to traffic. It has to be.
It has to be.
Yes. Legally.
Like Eric said a minute ago, it sounded like it was more operating money, but I'm sure Eric just misspoke because he, I'm confusing him.
Definitely projects, not personnel.
We have an attorney that sits in area of all of our bond meetings to make sure that we're making sure we're spending those bond monies on capital projects.
Good, I'm glad for that.
Among other things.
Anytime we have a water watching over us, it makes me feel better. Item Q, it was a refunding project, and I didn't understand it. We had outstanding bonds to be considered, $71 million, and we're only issuing approximately $65 million in refunding bonds. I was curious as to what the difference was.
In this case, that's because, and this is an estimate right now, this is just a funding plan. We're going to come back with the authorization for the bonds on February the 3rd, but the expectation is that we'll get premium on those bonds as we sell those, so they'll pay us, when they're sold, we'll receive more than the face value, so we'll sell a lower amount. I think we're estimating $65 million, but in total, we'll receive enough to refund the bonds.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we also have a short presentation on item T, I'm sorry, item S, which has to do with a new improvements to the OKC.gov website, and Zach Nash is here to talk to us about that.
I'm Zach Nash, Public Information and Marketing. And on today's agenda, you have an item to approve or consider that will redesign OKC.gov. And it's really an exciting project for us. It's one that's long overdue. We're working alongside IT and really all city departments because, you know, this impacts every city department to provide the information online in an accessible way. It's really been decades since we redesigned OKC.gov, and the way that users interact online is completely different now as it was then. I mean, this can, this has changed really in the last two years, five years. We access information online completely different. And we know from the citizen survey that more people are coming to OKC.gov and our other avenues of information now than ever before. And we want to build on that high level of citizen confidence that's reflected in our citizen survey as we approach this redesign. So, currently, and just to kind of give you a quick overview of OKC.gov, you really have to know what department a service is in as it stands now. The information is either on the front page, or you have to know that, let's say, strong neighborhood initiatives or housing programs are in the planning department, or to get a permit, you have need to go to development services. And we are really looking to kind of switch from that kind of department-oriented website to a more service-focused website. And so, you really don't have to know those details when you come to OKC.gov because we have so many pages and information out there that it's sometimes difficult to do. You know, from that are all these goals that we have. We have four major goals, making information more accessible to all users, refreshing the look and content and experience, improving the search functionality, which is really important right now, and making it easier for staff to maintain that. We're really going to reduce the content to really manage it. Right now, you know, a lot of that stuff hasn't been touched in probably 10 to 15 years, and so we really want to scale back the content to the most important stuff and then kind of, so we can grow better as we maintain that information online. So, the project stages we have is research and engagement, concept, design, development, testing, and launch. One thing that's not mentioned up here is after we launch, after we go through, we're going to do a lot of research. We're going to have, you know, four years ago, we had a lot of public meetings. We met with stakeholders to see how they were using OKC.gov. And after we launch, after we go through the process, we should, it's kind of a 24- to 44-week project. We don't know kind of how fast it's going to go because there's so much content out there, and there's so many things that we need to think about. But after we launch, we're not going to stop there. We're going to do some A/B testing. And what that means is we're going to launch a couple of versions of the site and watch it over a three- to four-month period and make changes, see how people are interacting with it and using it. And so, we're just not throwing something out and, you know, just hoping that it works well for residents and businesses. A few quick features that is going to be in the site, disaster communications. This is important because we know from social media that when something happens, people turn to us for information that they need. And so, we're really going to focus a lot on disaster communications and having three pre-populated pages or four with stuff like tornado information, what to do after a tornado, flash floods, possibly even earthquakes. And so, wherever we are, no matter what time it is, we can quickly switch that front page. And so, no matter where someone goes to the website, they're going to hit that information that is needed for their health and safety. Social media integration, we've had a large success over the last seven years with social media, engaging, listening, and educating people about our story, and we're going to continue that through social media integration. Better accessibility, including the American with Disabilities Act is a focus. Google translation service for those who need that information in languages other than English. A responsive design, what we know from the recent OKC.gov app, our vendors see QuickFix that built that mobile app for us, they were just surprised that in our city that they had the most downloads in the first two months than any other clients. And so, we know because of that, people are wanting a mobile-friendly website, and so that's going to be a focus. No matter if you go on a tablet or your smartphone, that you'll get that information presented in the most accessible way. Photo multimedia galleries, forums and surveys tools, which is important so we can get away from those PDF forums. We can have some web-based forums, content scheduling and analytics and web statistics so we can continue to grow and see how people are using that down the road. So, some ways to stay engaged as we go through this process, we're going to put a website up, OKC.gov/Redesign, and you can also follow us on social media to kind of follow this project if approved. Does anyone have any questions?
All right. Sounds very exciting. Could you go over that?
I have a question.
You said there were more downloads of the app for the mobile device. Is that --
Yes. It was, we asked for the statistics on Android and Apple platforms, and Oklahoma City had the most downloads of all their clients, and they have hundreds of municipalities.
Wow.
So, we were really excited to see those numbers coming back.
I hope that this means we have more puddles and maybe they're all downloading.
Which is frightening as high grass and weed season comes. This will be the first season of high grass and weeds in a couple of months, so --
It might be interesting to track exactly where they're going, why they're going.
Definitely. We do that.
And if they're using it after they've downloaded it. But, you know, any data you have in that area, I'd love to see it, too.
Definitely.
I guess I had the same kind of question. How do we go about evaluating this new website?
Well, we really look at, we're going to pull the analytic data from the last two years and look at that, and after we launch, we're going to see if we have an uptick in visitors. We're going to probably do some follow-up surveys to see how people respond to the design. And so, we hope to just not, not put the design out and let it set. We want to continually improve that. And by doing that is looking at that data and saying, okay, is, we know that the top three right now, things that people go to OKC.gov for are to adopt animals, jobs, and to pay their water bill. And that's the three things that are consistently the top. But we do so much more, and the thing about it is, is maybe because that information is buried so deep that people can't find, and so we're going to look at that and see the trends of how people are accessing the website.
Your Honor. Zach, I think this is a great idea, and I, you know, it's a, an issue that is brought up to me by residents of Ward Five at least, and they are searching for more information. And I think it will relieve members of the council of attempting to provide the same information individually through social media. So, I appreciate your work in this area, and I think, Pat, we will find out soon just from comments from the citizens. I mean, I get quite a bit concerning accessibility of information, so.
We can only really go up with the site we have right now, so.
Thank you. Yeah, he's very accessible, too, from us. Yeah.
Just us talking to Zach, it's got to be some kind of formalized process, otherwise it's not going to be done effectively. I don't believe it.
That's definitely.
Anything else for Zach? All right, thanks for the presentation. Look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Anything else on the consent docket? We're ready to vote.
Are we going to hear about Q or?
Just as to how this process works with the two, the PFM and the subcontractor? I'm sorry, P. P, I'm sorry.
The item on your agenda today is an amendment to the city's contract with public financial management to provide advisory services for the next phase or phases of the Convention Center Hotel RFP process. One of the things that the city team determined that would be important would be to ask PFM to add to the team a firm that specializes in hotel management and advisory services. We asked PFM to perform an informal competitive process where we took proposals from several different hotel management firms. We evaluated those proposals. The city staff participated in that process, and we identified Capital Hotel Management as the most qualified firm to add to the team. So, the contract with PFM would be amended to add additional services to their contract for the work that they will do, helping us go through the RFP process, interviewing companies, and then through the negotiation process, and also amends the contract to add CHM as a member of the city's team.
Kathy, where is CMH headquartered?
They're headquartered out of Boston, I believe, but I think they're opening an office in Denver.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. One item on the concurrence docket today, do we have a motion? Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That brings us to item eight on the council agenda. These are items that require a separate vote. We have four zoning cases to begin. The first is in Ward Eight at 14800 North Rockwell Avenue. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would become R1 single-family if approved. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant is represented both by council, and he's here in person, so I think we've got, if there are any questions from the council, we can get those answered this morning. Otherwise, this is an area where we've got a lot of apartments already under development, and it's refreshing to see a single-family housing piece going in here. The applicant owns most of the property around here, so I think we've got it pretty well nailed down to be a successful project. I would move approval.
Okay. How many homes are in the development?
105.
Okay, 105 was the answer. Is this Deer Creek schools? Okay. Everybody ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward Two. It's at 838 Northwest 70th Street. It's currently a planned unit development, and if approved, will become an I1 light industrial district. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak? There was one protester.
There was one protester, but we amended this, or it was amended from I two to I one and so it passed unanimously at the planning commission. I'd move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on item eight A two? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight A three is a zoning case in Ward Five at 12121 Southwestern Avenue. It's currently C three community commercial and it would become a new spud if approved. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, anyone here signed up? Is the developer here or the representative? I have a couple of questions.
My name's Charles Allen with Allen Engineering. The owner is also here. Have any questions for him?
Just one question. A letter was submitted to the planning commission identifying concerns over drainage. Do you think that's been properly addressed as far as the residential development immediately to the west of this proposed area?
I believe so. The problem is the Goodyear, the tire sales car repair that's shown on the map.
Yes.
Has drainage with a flume that goes directly towards the neighborhood to the west.
Uh huh.
All that drainage will actually be routed through our development to the south and really avoid all that property to the west.
So it should actually improve the situation?
The only drainage that will go to the west is a ten-foot landscape buffer.
Okay, well, that's good. My next question, it's the final question. I know in the putt it said it would provide for certain types of auto repair with, with the garages being open until ten o'clock at night? Access to the buildings as late as ten o'clock at night?
Yes. I believe we restrict the hours from, I think, seven AM to ten PM.
How would you feel about restricting that to nine PM instead of ten PM?
I don't think we'd have a problem with that.
Okay. That's my only concern then. If, if we could include those in the modification, then I would recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item eight A three. Any comments or questions from anyone? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight A four is a zoning case in Ward Three at 6200 Shiloh Boulevard. It's currently a planned unit development and it would become a new spud if approved. Larry?
Your Honor, is the applicant present?
Yes.
If you could just give the council a brief overview of what the intention is and then address in there the two things that are lined out on page one of the report, the electronic message deploy, display, and also the building must be oriented toward Highway 152, so we know exactly where we stand on those two issues.
Yes, sir. Mark Grubbs on behalf of the applicant, Grubbs Consulting. The, the two items that were stricken, this is a, a single-use spud to support Brahms. The two items that were stricken is the EMD sign and the building not facing State Highway 152. Brahms, most of their signs, if you know Brahms, is a pole sign. And what, what I, when they came to me, they said, well, you know, can we do our pole sign? I said, probably not a good idea. You got something a little nicer. So this is something that they've done in other areas where a pole sign's not allowed and they have a standard EMD sign on there, so everybody knowing their milk's on sale, things of that nature. But the other deal was, I don't show it on here, but the site plan, we put the parking in back of the building, so it is not out on the front edge of 152, which I think is something that's more appealing. So we just ask that not be required.
So you're going to do that, but this, it will face 152, but the fact that you've lined through this requirement doesn't change that fact?
It, the, the parking will not be on the, it will not be on the building side.
The, the building will, my name's Wendell Stewart, I'm with Brahms. Sir, the, the building will be facing Shiloh where the entrances come in. If we turn it around and face it that, the other way, then our customers have to cross through the drive-through lane to be able to get to the store and obviously that'd be kind of a hazard and a little bit dangerous. So we have to orient the building to where the entrance ends, to where the customers flow into.
Okay, so it's not going to have to be oriented toward 152 is what we're, what we're talking about?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm sort of confused. Unless the council has any questions, did anybody signed up? It was approved by the planning commission, I'm move for approval.
Any other comments or questions on item eight A four? All right, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item eight B is a public carrying, this is the second time this has been in front of the council, that changes our policies on what could constitute a public nuisance. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? Item eight B. All right, any comments or questions from council before we move it forward? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight C is a request for proposals and this has to do with the proposed downtown Convention Center Hotel. Kathy, you want to lead us through this process?
Sure, I'll get it, I'll get, get it started this morning. Today in your packet is the request for proposals for a Convention Center Hotel developer or hotel management firms. We thought we'd give you a little bit of a project update and then Tom Morse with PFM will walk you through the procurement process and the timeline and some of the, the future steps we'll be going through. So just as a reminder, we presented to you the hotel market analysis and economic impact study in December of 2013. Those, that study, the market study showed that Oklahoma City could support about a 735-room hotel, Convention Center Hotel, that needed to be an upper upscale quality brand for the market. Following that, we had a series of stakeholder meetings with city council and other people in the community that are interested in hotel development and, in the tourism and convention business, trying to get their input into, and your input, into what your desires were as far as a hotel, what interested you, what didn't interest you. If you remember, we talked a little bit about public ownership versus private ownership and even though I think there's a desire, if at all possible, for the hotel to be privately owned and privately developed, that there was also a recognition by the city council that public ownership, if it results in a substantially lower subsidy, might be something that we'd want to look at. We, we've developed a preliminary financial review and developed a model that we can use as we analyze proposals once they're received. We benchmarked other cities' hotels and how they were developed and I think the, the conclusion we reached is that every one of these transactions is handled a little bit differently in every market and ours will be a little bit different too. In October, we briefed you about, in October 2014, we briefed you about all of that work and you directed us to prepare the request for proposals. And that document is with you today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Morse and he's going to step through the processes for the RFP and the timeline.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor, city council, nice to see you all. So as Kathy said, after our last meeting, we developed the RFP. You have that draft in front of you and I'm happy to kind of field any questions that are within there. But the RFP seeks to get proposals from hotel developers and from hotel operators. So we'll be looking for two things out there in the marketplace, two sets of, and those may be the same companies or they may be different companies. Our responses are due in early March. What we expect to do is, and hopefully we'll get a half dozen or more proposals, would be the expectation. And what we would hope to do at that point is shortlist the most qualified set of respondents and then work with them to fine-tune the next steps of the procurement process and try and drive to a ultimate selection and recommendation to come back here to city council. The process will, will be asking for qualifications from companies that are experienced in doing similar projects around the country. We'll also be looking at their financial capability because we'll want to have them, they'll be taking on financial responsibilities on behalf of the city. It'll be very important that they have the financial wherewithal to move forward with a, a project of this magnitude. During the process, we'll be getting projections from the private entities about their expectation on how the hotel might perform and what the financial performance of that would be over time. So that will be important information that we'll get from the private sector from a point of view. It won't just be a consultant study. There will actually be people who operate these hotels. We then, as Kathy indicated, have a model developed that we can take those performers and look at it from the standpoint of the city and say, how does this stand up with the city? What are they expecting out of the city in return for the hotel development, if anything? We'll be advised by, as Kathy mentioned before, and, and in the earlier items, CHM is a, a very recognized hotel advisory firm. They will be helpful in working through the nuts and bolts of the contracts, ultimately with the parties as we go forward on the development. Any questions at, at this point in terms of an over, quick overview of the process? We expect on, on page five, on the last slide here, there's a timeframe, timeline for the procurement process. We would expect to be back with you sometime this summer with a lot of detail and some recommendations and, and I would expect at that point in time, you'll have a lot of input into the process and moving forward.
Are we seeing a significant amount of interest in Oklahoma City?
Yes, and I'll, I mean, certainly Kathy can speak to that. I think there's, there's been people kind of going through her door here for the past year and a half, so.
We've had several, several companies, several firms that have done projects all over the country that have, have expressed an interest in Oklahoma City and follow up with me periodically, wondering when the RFP is going to come out. So I think, I think we'll get, like Tom said, we'll probably get six or seven responses, so.
Tom, can you talk about the, how the parking garage fits into all of this? We haven't really talked about that component. How, how would that work in all of it?
Good question. I think we've, you know, and Kathy, I think, we've drafted some language, you can see it in the RFP with respect to the parking situation. So we, the city, I don't think at this point has made any final decisions about parking. We know parking's going to be integral to the hotel, it's going to be integral to the convention center, and that's something that we're going to look for feedback out of the process. But Kathy, I'll defer to you to maybe add some more.
Top is in the process of doing a downtown parking study at this point, point in time. I, preliminary results are not even in yet. I, I think I briefed this week maybe on it to take a look at some form right now.
A downtown parking study?
What's that?
You said a downtown parking study?
Right, to include the Convention Center, Convention Center, Convention Center Park, Convention Center Hotel and that, that part of downtown.
Okay, so you would, so then you'd have a cost for the Convention Center parking garage?
Now, first of all, we'd have a, we'd hopefully have some projection as to what the parking needs were. Start there as to what we think the parking needs will be and then take a look at how much can be picked up by the private sector and how much will that be picked up by the public sector.
The, the way that the RFP is worded and what we've discussed internally with city staff is that the city would enable the construction or the financing of parking to support the Convention Center and the Convention Center Hotel. What we are still trying to refine is the size of that parking garage, you know, how many spaces are going to be needed to support those two facilities and have possibly some public parking available because we do need it for other development in the area. So that's really what we ask respondents to address is, you know, how, how would they go about calculating the number of spaces that they need for the hotel? And then we'll, we will take it from there as far as, you know, financing and, and enabling the construction of the parking. And I think we need to recognize and that the developers need to recognize that this is a significant contribution to the project. They, they will be expected to pay for that in some way, maybe through lease payments, but I think by clarifying the issues of parking for them, we do have a better chance of getting better proposals.
Parking's a complex issue and, and, you know, there's, there's a lot that's happened recently on, on, on private parking going in. But the fact of the matter is that most likely the Cox Center will be going away at some point in the future. That decision hasn't been made yet, but there's, there's a thousand parking spaces there and that's going to have to be addressed at some time in, in the future. So it's something to be added. Uses are, and demands are being added, some parking's going away. It, it's a dynamic process that we're trying to address.
So based on our experience with building parking garages, what would be a range from the small end to the large end of, of what a parking garage for the Convention Center might cost?
I, I don't know that we've even reached that conclusion yet. I mean, if it's, if, and it depends on if it's underground or if it's above ground and, I mean, there's so many variables that go into that at this point in time, I, I wouldn't even want to give you a range of numbers. And, and is it, is it a 3,000 space garage? Is it 1,500? We haven't determined any of that yet and that's what we're asking the proposers to help us do. Help us clarify the size of the garage and then we can do the work on, you know, is it underground, above ground, you know, all of the different things that go into, that drive the cost of the construction.
And variable cost of a parking space can be between $15,000, $50,000 space up to, if it's underground, up to $30,000.
So the RFP has written, has the city paying for the, for the parking garage? Or one of its trusts or?
It has the city enabling the construction of the parking garage.
So we would, we would have a public discussion about options at what point?
I think as we get proposals in and as we finalize the size of the garage and where it's located and, you know, the above-ground, underground issues. So the summer.
And who, this says that a selection committee has been selected. Who, who's on the selection committee for the RFP?
The city manager appoints the selection committee. Right now, we've asked myself, Craig Freeman, Brent Bryant, we've asked Councilman Greenwell and Councilman McAtee, and we're going to ask Tom McDaniel from the MAPS Advisory Board.
All right. Any other comments or questions here? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on this? Okay. Cast your votes on item eight C. Passed unanimously. Item eight D, if approved, would make amendments to the criteria on the city's housing programs policy?
And Bob Daley is here this morning to explain these to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. When we originally designed this, we received a grant award to assist citizens to make repairs to their property that had to be income-qualified. We weren't sure what the demand was going to be for the program and we thought we could recapture the dollars so they could come back and assist more citizens to make repairs to their property. What we found out in processing the applications was the, the individuals that applied for the program that income-qualified already had mortgages on their properties and they had already sustained storm damage and couldn't afford to make the repairs. So we made a modification and put a limit of $23,000 as a five-year forgivable loan for income-qualified applicants for the program.
Okay, any comments or questions?
What was the criteria for the forgiving part? Do they have to complete the repairs and live in the house for a certain period of time before?
Five years is the minimum. We'll put a lien on the property for five years and it'll be forgiven at the end of that five-year period. If they move out before then, it'll be prorated 20% a year.
Oh, but also so we've changed the age requirement.
There is no age requirement, it's only income requirement.
Okay, great.
All right, we're voting on item eight D. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight E is our contract with the FOP, like it has been ratified by the, the masses.
It was last week.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. My compliments to the staff and the FOP for another year. My compliments to the staff and the FOP for another year of successful negotiation. Item 8F, this has to do with the item that we struck from the agenda. No, it doesn't. This is the management pay adjustment that typically reflects our labor union contracts. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8G, understand we do not need executive session?
We do not.
Okay, we have a motion to, well, we need to adopt it. Uh huh. Cast your votes. Item 8G passed unanimously. Item 8H, understand we do not need executive session?
We do not.
Is there a motion on 8H?
Yes.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8I, nothing on water today, so we can strike this item with a motion in a second.
It will say, move, strike.
Cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item 8J is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9A? All right, how about a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Councilman Ryan, we do have a few people that have signed up to speak on your resolution.
Your Honor, this is the day for a public hearing on this issue, and dependent on the results of that, we'll either go forward and have a vote on, a final vote on next Tuesday.
Okay. Pete Kramer?
Pete Kramer, 3212 Windsor Terrace. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. Excuse me. When we spoke last week about the proposed ordinance changes to where bicyclists should ride in the street, a lot of discussion was presented about Oklahoma City becoming a bicycle-friendly community. Interestingly, the day after the council meeting, I received an email from the League of American Bicyclists with a preliminary draft of their feedback report on the application that Oklahoma City made to become recognized as a bicycle-friendly community. I asked the league, and they gave me permission to share the feedback report with the council prior to its official release, which would only take place after the vote next week. So since the report is germane to what you're considering, they agreed to allow me to share that with you. So I have a copy here that I'll give to the secretary, but I'll also email everybody on the council a copy of that report as well so that you can look at it. There were several items, though, on the report that I wanted to highlight this morning that were recommendations to the city to become more bicycle-friendly. One was, and interestingly enough, it was to pass ordinances that protect bicyclists. And as presented, the ordinance changes that you're considering, the intent is to make bicycling safer for bicyclists in Oklahoma City. One of the problems that we have is that these ideas are generated with goodwill, but they really don't take into account what bicyclists really encounter in the street as cyclists. Motorists see one thing, bicyclists see something else. So there really needs to be a process that allows bicyclists to input on these proposals and recommend ordinances prior to them being introduced to this level, which leads up to the second recommendation from the League of American Bicyclists, which is the city should create a bicycle advisory council that is an official-appointed council by the city. We do have a regional bicycle advisory committee through ACOG, but that focuses on the entire region around Oklahoma City, the four county area. The other recommendation is that the city should have more bicycle parking spaces and should adopt an ordinance to require new development to have bicycle parking included. A previous item this morning discussed municipal parking garage and expansion. There was no mention of bicycles in there. You know, if someone wants to ride a bike to the convention center, to the city hall, where do we park our bikes? There's a bike chained up to the railing right outside the front step, but there's no bike parking here, and bike parking needs to be protected and secured. Looking at all the ordinances that Oklahoma City has enacted over the years, we need to realize that Oklahoma City is very big, but it's also part of the region, and it's not unreasonable for a bicyclist to live in Norman and to ride their bike to Guthrie. And there are, by my count, about 13 jurisdictions in the central Oklahoma region. All of those jurisdictions have different rules on where a bicycle should ride. Oklahoma City is the only community that requires a bicyclist to use a bike lane. None of the other communities that I surveyed have that requirement. So a cyclist from Norman, which does not require a bike lane use, riding through Moore, which does not require a bike lane use, comes into Oklahoma City, requires bike lane use. Well, if they're not aware of that law and they come through downtown, then there's a potential of a citation. They move on to Edmond. Well, Edmond has an ordinance that Oklahoma City does not have that allows a bicyclist to proceed through a red light if the red light does not detect the bicycle present, and it's clear and safe for the bicyclist to cross the red light. They do have to come to a stop, they treat it as a stop sign, and then they can proceed. Norman and Yukon have a mandatory helmet law for bicyclists under the age of 18. So if an Oklahoma City resident were to take their family to an event in Norman and their kids don't have helmets, they could be cited. So we have a variety of laws across the region that are not consistent as you move from one jurisdiction to the next. Look at the situation of a motorist driving from Midwest City to Yukon. All the laws are the same. All the rules of the road are the same. You don't have to know that this city or that city has a different law that requires you to drive your car in a different manner. So a recommendation that I would make is that the city council table or decline to move forward the ordinance changes as written, which per se by themselves are not particularly bad, but they really don't accomplish the stated goal of safety. There's other things involved. Table that ordinance for now and actually pass a resolution that will request either a bicycle advisory committee, the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, or ACOG to do an inventory and survey of all regional bicycle ordinances and come up with a best practice to bring back to the Oklahoma City and to the region so that we have consistent bicycle laws across the state, not across the state, across our metropolitan region for, to make it easier for bicyclists to commute and to ride through these different jurisdictions as they go forward. The fourth recommendation from the League of American Bicyclists that I wanted to highlight in this report was that we need to offer more adult bicycle education courses in the region. I'm a league cycling instructor, so I have an interest in that, and I used to offer a lot of courses when I worked at Metro Tech. We have a lot of, we have about six league cycling instructors in the Oklahoma City metropolitan area now that are able to offer these courses. So maybe a program could be created regionally or city to offer bicycle education courses so that we can educate bicyclists the safe way to ride and how to ride safely on the road and share the road with motorists. And to that goal, as an instructor, and I am certified by the League of American Bicyclists, I'd like to offer to the city council, to the municipal counselor and his staff, to any staff of Oklahoma City planning that would like to take a free bicycle training course and learn how bicyclists ride the way they do. It's a nine-hour class that the League of American Bicyclists has created called Traffic Skills 101. And it does involve riding a bicycle, so maybe we can make a deal with Spokys to get some bikes to do those rides around town. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I don't have candy, but I do have one of these nifty bike lapel pins that, with your permission, I'd like to give to the council.
Sure. Thanks, Pete. While you're doing that, William Drake, if you'd come forward.
Good morning, Councilman Mayor. I'm William Drake, 1116 Northwest 43rd Street, Oklahoma City. I'm going to speak more about as a cyclist. I haven't had time to do much research, even though I do read the Bicycling Magazine quite often. One of the historical things that y'all may not realize is that paved roads were not designed for cars originally. They were designed for bicyclists. In fact, the bicycle was a major implement in the women's movement because when bicyclists, women's clubs started coming into action, they got to wear pants. Bicycles are not cars. We are not isolated from the world as cars are. We are social, very social, to the point that saying, well, you have to ride to the breast, almost doesn't work, especially in group rides. I am a group ride leader, and when we left the park for the doughnut ride this Saturday, we were easily five abreast leaving the park. And if you're with other riders that are skilled even moderately, they know to ride true and straight. And so three-foot clearance isn't as applicable as it is for us from cars. We are afraid of cars. We lose every time when we have an accident with a car. There's just no ifs, ands, and buts. One of my problems with riding to the far right of the road, this last week or so, I don't know that, remember exactly, we had a rider that got hit. They were actually riding on the white line on the side of the road. He was eight inches off. Because of that, I've seen this myself, a lot of drivers think, well, I can still squeak by him and stay in my lane. The third rider in the group got hit and is in the hospital. So I tend, like other riders do, is to take the lane. If I'm in the middle of the road, they have to go ahead and swing around me, which means I usually get my three-foot clearance, which makes me happy. Another thing that makes me happy to this day, since I've been riding since the late 70s, it's nice not to have things thrown at you anymore. Drivers in the city have become much more respectful of us. Another thing about passing other bicyclists or motorists, a lot of their bike lanes themselves are just three feet wide. So if we're passing and staying in the bike lane, we don't have three foot. So there again, I am going to occur with my friend Pete that we should discontinue these ordinances as written and start anew with us having some input with you to show us that bicycling is not like driving a car. Even solo riding is different because we're out amongst it, and in riding, your senses are heightened because you have to be careful of what's on the road. You have to be careful of your speed. You have to be careful of your line. You have to be careful of the traffic around you. So it's my feeling that a lot of times cyclists are much, much more aware of their surroundings. I have never heard of a cyclist hitting a rear ending a car. Now, I've come real close to a cyclist once before, but still, because I was aware in that he was, yeah, he's going to turn, that I was able to compensate and break. For our weight and speeds, it's just not comparable. So I would like the council to reconsider the ordinances and postpone them until they can meet with us or other cyclists. Let's make the laws more uniform throughout the region. Thank you for your attendance, your attention. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, William. Roger Welch? Good morning.
My name is Roger Welch. I live in Ward 7, formerly in Ward 8. I just want to say a few words. I'm an avid cyclist. I ride at least 5,000 miles a year, sometimes as many as eight. Depends on the weather and what else the family's doing. My concern is that if we change the ordinances the way they are now, there'd be a lot of confusion about the three-foot law. Right now, it's fairly clear, or at least I think it's fairly clear. The concern I would have that is if the three-foot law is changed, that what, for example, happens if we're in a bike lane and there's not room for three feet and somebody opens a car door? You know, who is responsible for that if someone opens a car door? If the cyclist is required by law to have the minimum three feet and circumstances don't allow the three feet, it could be that the cyclist would be responsible for that injury as opposed to the person that didn't check the traffic before they opened the door. My own thoughts are that to make the streets safest for cyclists would be through education, both for the cyclist and the drivers. Certainly, there are cyclists out there that shouldn't be out there. I, as I ride a lot, I see cyclists doing things that just appall me. At the same time, the lady that was driving the big fancy SUV that crowded me Saturday, I'd like to speak with her too, if I could have caught her. The other thing that I would like to talk about on this amendment would be where to ride. Riding as far to the right as possible, in my opinion and in the data that I've seen, is dangerous. If you're far to the right that people can squeeze between you and oncoming traffic, they will. And the Oklahoma State Driver's Manual says you shouldn't squeeze between bicycles and oncoming traffic, but people do. The safest place to ride is in the passenger's tire track. That leaves you room to dodge if you have to. It also requires the motorist to pull around you, to get around you, and you can't do that if there's oncoming traffic. The other part of that would be a requirement to ride in a cycle lane if the lane is available. Oklahoma City does not routinely sweep the streets. Curbside lanes are notoriously full of junk. Rocks, bricks, boards, broken glass, anything that gets thrown out of the driving lane ends up in the bike lane. If you happen to be in a clean bike lane and all of a sudden there is a lot of trash and debris up there that could cause you to fall, now then you have to see quickly, can I avoid this, or do I get in front of a car? I really think we should have the option of, if the cycle lane is good and clean, we'll use it. If it's one of these black over on Wilshire Boulevard today, no. So that's all I had to say. I thank you for your consideration. I would respectfully request that we not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, is there a motion to move this forward toward a final hearing? All right. When would the final hearing be, Francis?
Next week.
Okay.
We had to hear, but I've not been able to get the bicycle company. I think there's still some misunderstanding about what the law, the amendment is. I had two items, we need all the other things replaced on the floor. I think it's important that we do what we suggest, get some group, somebody responsible for making the system very clear. Because we get a lot of bicyclists in Oklahoma City, bicyclists, we're going to confuse them.
We have a motion in a second to move this forward.
I'll second it, but just before we vote, I do think the suggestions that were made this morning need to be looked into and addressed, so hopefully, yeah.
For ACOG, for instance, for somebody, if what they've suggested is to appoint somebody and head up this effort to get a consistent set of ratings.
Well, but I'd say also the suggestion to have a committee just for Oklahoma City to develop.
But we need to make sure that we don't develop ordinances that are contrary to what other cities have. That's why I suggested somebody could pull, look at the whole thing, pull up here. ACOG, for instance, do that.
Yeah.
For the terms of transportation, we have a consistent. For the terms of transportation, if we have a consistent approach, of course, maybe consistently, we don't get any help. But we do have ACOG trying to bring those people together. I think that maybe our organization might be able to accomplish the same thing. But we need to ask Oklahoma City to make it.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I second.
Some of the things that were said today, I agree with. I think it reminds me of the book about men are from Mars or women from Venus or vice versa. There is such a difference between people that perceive how the road ought to be run if you're in a car and those that ride bikes. I mean, I would have to acknowledge that I have some prejudice and probably is against bike riders based on my experience driving home every night. The way I go home is a very narrow, two-lane road, lots of curves, lots of, no passing areas because of the curve, and bicyclists four or five abreast, riding 15 miles an hour and flipping me off because I'm trying to figure out a way to get around them legally. I followed them as far as a mile before without an opportunity. They could have accommodated it had they chose to. And so I'm, and I don't ride bikes. I've got to go ahead and get my will completed before I would put myself at my age on a bike. So, but I do think, but I do think this, I see a lot, I'm the city's ACOG rep, and so I'm at the ACOG meetings. I see lots of activity at ACOG that has, like, in fact, ACOG's in the room today. And I see a lot of activity. I'm compelled to think that the best answer is to refer it for a unified set of rules. I would, although it's at my, with my perspective, it's extremely difficult for me to visualize riding from Norman to Yukon on a bicycle through Oklahoma City. And I suspect there are people that would do that. There are people that would run that far. There are people that probably, if there was enough television out there, would ride a tricycle that far. But I think we've got to find a way to make it where there's not, where there's not so many differences. If it is the case that all these cities have different rules, and I suspect it is, I think I'm in favor of referring it to ACOG or to some, formation of some kind of committee to come up with a solution rather than picking it. And that's what we're doing. We're picking it. We're taking this little thing and doing it this way. Some other cities taking some other little thing and done it another way. And I think that we probably, and I do think it's a mistake not to have the cyclists at the table. I think they ought to be at the table, although if they're at the table, I don't know what you want me at the table. But I recognize that it's a coming thing. I understand it is a coming thing. And I'm going to vote to move this forward, but next week, I'm going to urge that it be deferred indefinitely for the purpose of forming a, some kind of a committee with ACOG probably as the coordinator of it to try to find some kind of uniformity.
I would share Pete's comments, but on a slightly different scale. Ward Six is very bike friendly and very, lots and lots of biking activity. I've heard from as many people on biking, I think, as I did on the dreaded subject of chickens, and really interested in making sure that Oklahoma City is as bike friendly as we possibly can be. So I think engaging the community to talk about consistent rules is a really good idea.
But ma'am, as we evaluate the bike friendliness of Oklahoma City, we need to have some recognition of the fact that our taxpayers have spent an awful lot of money to develop a bike-friendly city. We've got bike trails. We've got a lot of paints on the sidewalks that don't do a lot of good for cyclists, but it does warrant motorists that their bikes may use the full lane there. And I think we need to recognize a couple of things. One is that this ordinance is on the books primarily already. So I don't know how the tabling would affect that because we, the items four A through C were already on the books. So we'd have to go back and do something for those, I think, to table the whole, the amendment, to get any good out of it. So I don't know that that.
I have an interesting situation that occurs in my ward all the time. And it is, we've got this really wonderful bike trail that extends from Midwest Boulevard all the way to Douglas. It's rural, no cars, wide, really nice. And then it just dumps right out on roads east of Douglas that are inadequate to ride a bike on. The road itself is not, it's so rough and so many potholes, but bike riders want to ride around the lake, so they ride it anyway. And it's, so I see a lot of people being able to ride unfettered from Midwest Boulevard all the way, or actually, it's Air Depot, all the way to Post across that open area, really nice situation. And then boom, they're right there at Draper, and the roads are not, they're hard, we're rebuilding the road clear across the north because it's really not a good road or even a satisfactory road for automobiles. But we have bikes on it, and it just doubles the problem. So, and that's the part I, that I have to take a blood pressure pill when I get home every night after I drive it.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. As I'm listening to conversation, Mr. Kramer, I thought, made a very good presentation. And what I gleaned from that were there were four things that the Bicycle Society, I may have the wrong term there, thought that Oklahoma City should do in order to be, quote, "a more biker friendly community." And I haven't heard anybody up here say, "We don't want to be a biker friendly community." So that being said, the four things were to protect the bikers, have an advisory council, have more parking spaces, and have more classes. Whereas I go down that list and look at the two things that are on the docket for discussion, they both hit protection, as I see it. And they could be, in my opinion, implemented while we are addressing the advisory council through ACOG, if you would, additional parking spaces for bikers, and the education. So, and I wish somebody between now and next week who's in the biker community could tell me how, if we adopt these two things, not going down between lanes and the three foot, how that would hinder biker protection, and if it wouldn't, why wouldn't we be advised to go ahead and implement those while other things are going on to move us forward to accomplish the bigger goal? And that's my statement. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Let's see if there's votes to push this forward to a final vote next week. And there are. It is unanimous. We'll take a look at it next week. Thanks, everybody, for participating. And feel free to contact members of the council if you have additional comments to make or questions were asked. Other items from council. James, do you have anything for us today? Ed?
It just seems like something should be said about the historic decision by the Downtown Design Review Committee to approve the demolition of nine historic buildings, including the bus station. And I guess I'd just, I'd express my gratitude to our planning department for trying and recommending against demolition of the bus station, to Betty Bernstetter for voting against that. I think you ignore your planning department at the risk of your own peril. If we look back and it doesn't work and we realize we went against our planning department, there may be regret. It just doesn't seem like we're on the same page. We're talking about unprecedented TIF allocations for the Clayco proposal to get people to live in that area in high-end luxury condos. And then we're using strategies of the past that have failed us, like building sky bridges and three parking garages, all in high density, and destroying something with historic significance like the bus station, which companies express interest in making it into a restaurant. It could have been a half dozen really great things for those living in that area. And so it just doesn't seem like we're on the same page. I know it can be intimidating, especially when entities like the Chamber are putting advocacy positions in front of 1,500 people at the State of the City luncheon. But still, those in the planning department who advocated for that, I applaud them, and I'm grateful for their position. I think leaving this sign in the building will be a testament, really kind of an eternal reminder of our failure, frankly. And we played a part in moving the bus station out to MLK in Reno. I'm still just stunned that all those poor individuals, generally poor socio-economically, that we dumped them out on MLK in Reno with no connection to public transit. While we had an entity in that sign that will be incorporated into the parking garage will be a reminder of that. And so I hope somebody appeals it to the Board of Adjustment. I don't have a lot of hope, but I hope somebody does. Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank publicly Georgie Rasko for an excellent talk that she gave to the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association last week. And she was talking about being a good neighbor, and it fit right in with your challenge at the State of the City in support of the bombing memorial anniversary coming up, of doing acts of kindness and honor for our neighbors. And Georgie's whole pitch was, just be a good neighbor, and that will help energize and improve the quality of life in your neighborhood. So thank you to Georgie for taking the time to come and give such an inspirational talk. And then I'd like to encourage the neighbors in the Windsor, the Meridian Hills Association, they have a meeting this week and they know when. I hope they'll come out and participate. Georgie's whole bottom thesis was, there's more to being a good neighbor than just coming to neighborhood association meetings. Just get out and do random acts of kindness and help your neighbors out. Thank you, Your Honor.
Good reminder. Thanks, Larry. Pete?
I want to just voice my concern with the decision concerning the demolition of a couple of blocks. It just seems like we can't, there's not a building in Oklahoma City we can't wait to tear down. I mean, it just, I appreciate the move they made to save some of the historical significance of the bus station, but as someone's been around here a long time and looked at all the vacant property that was destroyed years ago, and I know what you're going to say is, "You can't look at the past." But if you don't look at the past, if you don't look at it and try to make sure you don't repeat it and you're not reminded of it once in a while, you're going to make the same mistake over and over and over. And I just, you know, over the last few years, we've accelerated this tearing down of old structures. And the Sand Ridge deal doesn't look to me like it's proceeding at the same rate. When we decided to tear down the oldest building left in downtown Oklahoma City to make way for it, I just, I'm wondering if that's going to be worth it or not. I don't like the dissident or that kind of appellation to be applied to me, but I can't stop speaking out for things that I don't think are the right path. I can't stop asking questions about, is it not possible that we do what we did with the scurven and try to save something rather than tear it all down? When you look at all the money that we spend subsidizing some of these things and all the other needs that we have that don't really have anything to do with some of the things that go on downtown, it troubles me. And I'm going to continue to advocate for what I believe is best for all of Oklahoma City. And I just want to make sure that I do share concerns about what's going on. One, with the amount of money that we're willing to continue to subsidize what we call economic development, and our willingness to tear down what's been here for, well, I could have said 100 years, but there probably ain't, there's not anything left in downtown Oklahoma City that's been here 100 years. So anyways, just a social comment.
David?
Well, those are all good points that have been made, and I'm going to withhold mine until I've had a chance to look at the, a little bit more in detail, the proposal for this development activity. But one thing I would like to point out, keeping that sign for the bus station in that current location, I think it could be better served to transfer that and suggest that some developer take that and use it for a new restaurant built, for example, along Film Row. And you could even take the top layer of the decorative concrete of the Union Bus Station and transfer, you could build an exact replica of the bus station if you wanted to. And I think that would go further than just to try to retain that sign and just keep it there. The drawings that I've seen, I'm just not too pleased with. Same could be done for the lunchbox if they're going to retain that sign. But as far as the other use, again, I've not studied it well enough to come to a conclusion. But I do think these types of activities will generate a certain amount of economic activity that hopefully will offset the impact of lower energy prices for the next couple of years. So I do think we'll be, we'll have some benefit from that perspective. But I've brought this up before, and Kenny, if we could look into not having a requirement, but to provide a preference as new development takes place, a preference for local subcontractors, I think that's just going to enhance the impact on our local economy if we can make sure that local subcontractors and certainly suppliers are given a preference as we go forward with these types of developments. I know it hurts us at times when we talk in terms of those things because we don't always get the lowest price, and that's a concern. But if prices are being submitted that are similar, I think we should try to give a preference to local subcontractors and suppliers when we can. Final comment, and I know Councilman Shadie's going to have a town hall meeting on the issue of water relatively soon. They probably won't listen because they often don't to our ideas. But I think we need to begin to work with the state to try to develop ideas as to how we can get water from eastern Oklahoma out to western Oklahoma. That's a big project. It's very expensive. There's a lot of complex issues associated with it. But I anticipate that the drought that we're currently in the middle of will continue on, and our water problems are going to get worse. Now, I think the city of Oklahoma City's in a fairly good position thanks to a lot of foresight with our former leaders back in the 1950s and 60s, especially with the access to water in southeastern Oklahoma. But western Oklahoma, I think the problems are just going to continue to grow and escalate. And it could be such a benefit to the state's economy if we could get water out there to better irrigate all that farmland and then provide sufficient water supplies to all those cities and towns. Again, it's expensive. It's a complex problem. But I think if nothing else, maybe we'll continue to talk about it for the next five to 10 years until a solution has to be addressed. But I would encourage us, maybe through our legislative committee, to try to create enough support to have a statewide task force to begin looking at how we can get more water from eastern Oklahoma out to western Oklahoma. Thank you.
Thanks, David. I guess just a couple of other comments on this. I really would like to thank our planning department. They worked really, really hard on these projects and continue to do so. And the result may not have been what everybody had hoped for, but they did achieve some significant improvements. Cladding the garage all the way around on both sides was, you know, was an important step. Could things have been done better? I certainly would agree. And why we feel like we need a sky bridge, I'm not sure today. You know, one of our goals of all of these projects is to activate the streets. And I wish maybe we could have a little more conversation about that. I think we get to this place sometimes because perhaps our process doesn't start early enough. I think if some of these development projects would engage with our planning staff before the project is completely designed, we might have a little bit better framework to have a conversation that would get everybody to a little, maybe a little happier place. But I do want to remind folks that on that block, not, the entire block is not coming down. 421 West Main stays. down, 421 West Main stays. Very significant historic building, Harper Longmire Building, it was a hugely successful retail business for a long time. Pizza business on the corner stays, so a couple of those structures will retain their interest. And as you move further down on Main Street, I drive it all the time, and David Wonzers is doing an incredible project with the Main Street Arcade, which is going to be a fantastic restoration. There's a wonderful little antique shop in one, and so, you know, character of this area is changing, the city's evolving, but lots of great young developers are really taking the challenge to work. And Pete, with regard to Sandridge, you know, that was a really controversial project, but out of that, we caught one of the prettiest restorations in all of downtown with the Braniff Building. And, you know, it's now become corporate headquarters for Crow and Levy, Crow and Dun Levy Law Firm. It is a beautiful project. I'm hopeful that when that part gets finished, we really will enjoy the entirety of the campus. So I don't disagree that we have some work, continuing work to do and process, and how we make this happen. But I think the long-term goal is to increase density downtown, increase the number of folks on the street. The dream of, and hopes for increased retail only come when we have more folks living and working downtown.
Right. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past weekend, we celebrated, celebrated the life and legacy of Dr. King, and so I do want to take the time out to thank everyone who was, who were involved in the celebration. Thank you.
Could I just follow up on that? I really want to compliment the organizers this year. John and I meet with them two or three times during the course of the year, before the parade. But other than the fact that I think some businesses maybe didn't get notified by the parade organizers timely, I drove down Broadway about 5:30, and there were already cleaning crews out, people, and you barely could tell that there was a parade. And I know the weather contributed greatly to huge crowds, but it was just so much fun to see everybody, the excitement of folks gathering on the corners, and tons of families. It really was, was well done this year.
Saw horses galloping down 23rd Street yesterday.
Horses galloping down Broadway.
John? Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. As we go forward in redevelopment downtown, we need to recognize the difference between buildings with historical significance and just old buildings. Because I think some of the buildings we have tried to save, or talking about saving, have outlived their usefulness, or they wouldn't be being born down. And I think we need to be careful about that. The second thing is, on the bicycle issue, I think it's important that we move forward to get some kind of an overview of all the regulations, rules we have in place to deal with bicycles and traffic, and make them consistent from place to place. I think that ACOG, as Pete suggested, would be a great place for that, great place. Because we have all the main players involved, ACOG, who would restrict, or would not restrict, would address bicycle safety, one way or another.
All right. Thanks, Pat. All right. We have city manager reports.
Just claimed some barrel today.
All right. Citizens to be heard. Randy Water? Anyway, we will need your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Randy Water. I live at 1301 West Heffernan Road. Nice to see you guys. This is my first time, I've been coming to the council meeting for the past month. But noticing, in order to change something within your community, you have to be active. And like what Pete White was saying last week, is that we have a re, the east side is being revitalized, but we have no one in that community who is participating. And so when I come here today, I come here as an empty cup. I come here as someone who is knowing nothing, but is wanting to know all. I would like to feel with the knowledge and with the information that you guys have, so that way, when we do have plans, that there will be someone, or some people who can be there to help be part of the revitalization that is going on, on the east side. I grew up in Oklahoma City Public Schools, I graduated from Mustang, I went there my junior and senior year, and I saw the difference between living within the inner city, and then also living in the outer city. And I thank my father, who was here today. No, but I thank my father today for moving me to a different area, so that way you can see the difference. Well, last night, after the Martin Luther King Parade, you know, a young man was shot and gunned down on Martin Luther King Street at Auto Zone. And I was a photographer, I do photography, I do journalism work, I'm in college right now, I have a 3.5. I do documentaries and short stories, capture moments. Well, after seeing that last night, I understand why you guys want to revise, revitalize that neighborhood, why you want to get the blight out of that community. But what we want to know is, what can we do to be a part, so that way we can enrich the lives of our heritage and our future? Not only through economics, but through psychological, and through any means of training. And so I just come open, want to know what I can, what I can't do. I'm very humble in my efforts, and I admire the system, I admire America for who they are, and for what we stand for. And I just want to be taught how to do that.
Okay. Why don't you leave your contact information down at the end of my office? We're always looking for people for boards and commissions, and perhaps we can get you involved in that way. All right. Thanks for coming down. No executive session today, so we are adjourned.